Yes. Okay. So we'll start with public participation. Is that the amount of the public feedback?
[Laughter]
Listen, Liz, everything. Liz, this guy has one meeting. Just say so.
Um, so we presented a report.
Okay. Yeah, so trimester two just ended. We all had to take final exams. And trimester three just started two days ago. So it's a little different for some people. But it's been going over really well. Jackie?
I've just had their last, like, home performance last Friday. I didn't get a chance to see it.
I saw it, and it was so I didn't want it to end.
Yeah. I know they're really good. So I think they're going off to national soon enough. That was their last performance here at hand. And then girls' basketball just got runner-up in the Class L state finals. So I was really excited.
Hockey team, too.
Oh, yeah, hockey.
That's a lot of fun segments.
Very good.
Ryan, last trimester?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Maybe.
What, what?
Papers for that?
Uh, we haven't handed anything out yet. What's that?
Oh. I don't know. Something was in front of us when we got here.
Oh.
That's for the retreat, maybe?
Yeah.
Oh, this is Quebec. This is Quebec. This is a jet suit here. You got a lot of them. That's the travel stuff.
Yeah.
I have an agenda. I have an agenda, too.
Yeah, there's another. There's an agenda buried in that suit.
So Ryan, last trimester? Excited?
Yeah. I mean...
It shows.
Yeah. I mean, I still like going to school.
Are you here? No senioritis?
No, no senioritis.
Great.
Superintendent's report.
Okay. Could I start with other matters? Because we have some guests here, and I want to just recognize some folks. No, if I can just recognize some folks that are here tonight, and then we can do the tri-state visit follow-up. So three people that I've gotten to know very well over my tenure here on a professional level, but also at our personal level. Ben's a big Yankee fan, so we go way back on the Yankee talk, so...
We're all against you.
Yeah.
Yukon, Yukon.
Yes. Yes, that's right. A Yukon connection, too, yes. So our social workers, our district-wide social workers, who do incredible work typically behind the scenes, almost exclusively behind the scenes, actually. So I'm going to have you introduce yourself from each level here. So if you can start with Ben, if you can introduce yourself on your level, that'd be great.
Sure. I'm Ben Triber, the social worker at the high school. I think I've been there for, what, 20? I think that's my 22nd year.
Wow.
Been there for a while. I'm Claire Keenan. I work at Paulson Middle School and Brown Middle School. And I've been at the two schools for about five years now.
I'm Missy.
I'm Missy Harmon. I am school social worker at Ryerson and Jeffrey and Island Avenue. And this is my seventh year here.
And Missy, you still have... Your girl's still in high school, right?
Yes, so my son is at UConn.
And you got...
And my daughter's a sophomore.
So we get a chance once in a while to have you leave your confines of your comfy home and come and join us where we are every other Tuesday night, because we do like to take an opportunity to just highlight the work that happens. And a lot of your work happens, as I said, behind the scenes. There are a number of kids that you respond to on the basis of need. There are a number of kids you respond to in group settings, individual settings, and so forth. And there are probably the quiet actions that don't get a lot of headlines, but that probably mean more to that child, to those parents, and so forth. It's thankless, sounds kind of trite. I would say it's thankless, but it's very, very grateful, the work, especially to the folks that you are supporting. But I think the rest of the system is not as aware, because you do your work under the radar. You do your work in private, confidentially. But it is some of the most important work that happens to our district. They're also very active on committees. You know, Claire's been very involved in the whole child committee, and Missy as well. And that work reverberates throughout the whole system. So on behalf of the Board of Ed, I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do around the system. And this is it. This is our social work team, right? This is it. Just under 3,000 kids and three of them.
Wow.
So it was a lot of work from in the school, to outside the school, to visits, and so forth. And Ben's been on his own at the high school now with 1,000, and then we have the sharing of the schools. So we did a presentation a little while ago about the different roles of the school psychologist, the social worker, and the school counselor, and how you... The three kind of work to complement each other's work. But there's a niche carved out for social workers that no one else does fill or can fill, really, with the work that you do. And it's necessary and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate you coming. You can stay. We have a great meeting, so if you want to stay. Run! There's food over there. We never have food. That's kind of cool.
I brought the food.
Oh, you brought the food. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
All right. So I have one other other matter, but we're going to do our tri-state visit follow-up. We have an opportunity. We've had an opportunity now for, is it four years we all belong to tri-state?
Yes.
Yeah, so the tri-state consortium we talked about is a group of very, very powerful, powerful, very, very impressive, I think, systemic school districts across the New York, Connecticut, and New Jersey regions. The consortium is close to 50 strong right now, and the work is really evident in the indicators that are laid out in tri-state's mission and in the body of work around how do we go through the, I think, the powerful process of peer evaluation, peer review. We're in a, you know, we've been in an era over 20 years now of a bit of a warped sense of how schools are performing. This is one of the more powerful ways to kind of take a deep inward look with some, we call it, critical friends, on the performance of a system. This is the board. Board members who have been around for a while know that this was an approach for our district in lieu of an accreditation process with NIESC. We've worked alongside with NIESC to not go through the traditional NIESC process, but to use this in lieu of... All the New York districts in tri-state do that. We're the first Connecticut, and there's one, I think, right behind us that's going to do the same thing as well. So if they within the SCA accreditation process, I think the feedbacks is a much more powerful process and inward looking. So we have our friends that did a presentation. But before we do that, in our original visit in 2017, very comprehensive written report, we had to take actions on that report. And that follow-up visit was last Monday. And our math team here led that presentation, but three board members did join. I did do a little bit of a begging at the last meeting, and I appreciate, I know how difficult it is, workdays, bad enough Tuesday nights. But Galen, Emily, and Tom were able to join us, and I asked them if they would just share some observations that they had with that process that Monday for the three, four hours we were here. So whoever picked the shortest straw, you go first. And...
I'll go first. I really enjoyed spending time there to review sort of latest. I'm unbelievable. It just shows the work that went into this for all the team who was part of it. It was great to hear different perspectives around the room. I'm sure that people talked about they were students, and they were parents, and to hear the questions. They were really, you know, challenging and having us reexamine how we were doing math, which I thought was pretty neat. One thing that stuck out to me, one of the consultants said at the end, sort of in the fishbowl, is they said how we're a high-performing district where the mission and the execution go hand in hand. And talking about how it's one thing to have a mission statement, that's one thing to do really good work, but to have those things speaking to each other. I think, you know, we talk a lot about the mission and what drives our work and our vision. And to hear from those, as you say, critical friends, that they see those things connected, from your peers. Like, it's one thing for us to believe that, but from your peers in other, you know, high-performing districts was impressive. And I just liked to sort of peer into the process, though.
Tom is superintendent of Region 9 Eastern Reading. And that was actually the one quote I just jotted down, is that I remembered, is that that made me feel, as superintendent, incredibly affirmed, that you can have really good vision, mission, really good execution. Rarely has he seen the two until he came here. He called afterwards to kind of emphasize that. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, that was good.
I'd like to echo what Emily said. I think it's a testimony to Gail and to Carol and math teachers to see a very successful implementation after two years. You know, in watching some of the presentations, it was nice to see a kind of collaborative problem-solving approach with the kids at the elementary level, where they were in tables, and the teachers would visit, and some kids would explain other things to other kids. Again, it's just nice to get the validation from maybe a gold standard group of peers. So it was impressive.
Very briefly, I'd echo everything that Emily and Galen just said. Two additional perspectives. One is, you know, to Tom's point, this was done in lieu of a NIESC study. And so one of the things you'd first ask is, does it have the same level of rigor, I would say, if anything? Both in terms of the content and the time it was taken to put this together. It absolutely showed to me that it had that level of rigor. The other thing that I think is going off of what Galen said was, it was a pleasure to be able to see some of our teachers being able to display some of their techniques. You don't get to see it. You see it through your children, but you don't always see it when you see it through your children. I thought, and I comment on this to Gail, that it's, I think if I was a teacher, it'd be a great opportunity for me to feel like, you know, we push teachers to do a lot in terms of curriculum, and think about how they're advancing pedagogy in their classroom. I would have to think that the teachers feel that this is a pretty good moment for them to come back and really kind of have their own work assessed, and be able to really independently say, yeah, I'm moving this forward. It would seem like a good validation process for them, and a critical one at that, too. And I think our teachers gravitate towards that. So that felt good. That looked good, and I commend the district and all of you on your performance.
One other thing I'd like to say is there were students there to talk about their experiences with the curriculum, and their parents were there. And their enthusiasm was just... And I know obviously they were here because they love math, but the way they talked about it, the way their confidence, their excitement, their understanding, and also with the table in the front with the twins, they were talking about, first, I didn't know how this was math, because it was this group problem solving. That's not what you think about when you think about math. And they're like, they wanted to do math, and this, they didn't know how this was. And then they got to that point where they realized they were using that problem solving in that math. And to see the students respond like that, and just see how proud their parents were, was really neat. It was great to have them part of the process. I love that. So, thank you.
Gail?
You know, I think that whenever you have a group of peers of that caliber coming in, you get really nervous about what you think you've done and what they see that you've done. The first visit that we had in 2017 in May was actually a three-day visit in this room filled with bins of evidence all around the room, K through 12 posters up, including interviews in every building, students, parents, teachers, administrators. So it was a really thorough, deep dive. And then they come back and they give you both, you know, accommodations and recommendations. So in earnest, we look over that report, and we think, what's our next level of work? You know, it's great that they gave us some compliments, but also we know that we are, our journey is continuous improvement, how to get there. So the notebook that you see in front of you is just some pieces of evidence over that year and a half. So this is really taking some of the major themes and saying, here's the evidence. But that doesn't come together without all of these people who are on the ground, both in a coaching capacity and in a coordinator capacity, leading very close proximity to teachers and learners what it translates to in the classroom. So all of this, when we first looked at this, I think I speak for all of us, we're like, wow, what do we put in that notebook? And then once we realized how much work we had done, we're like, what do we take out of the notebook that speaks to what we're truly doing? So I want to thank and acknowledge everyone. Some of the people here you've met before, and some of the people you haven't. So I'm going to start with Stacy, who's a familiar face.
So I'm Stacy Daly, and I am a math coach at Jeffrey and at Brown.
I'm Jen Maxwell. I'm a math coach at Island and at Ryerson.
I'm Carol Sullivan, and I'm the coordinator for the middle schools.
I'm Melanie Whitaker, and I'm the coordinator of the high school.
So one thing, if board members who were here in 2017 may notice a slight difference is that Stacy, you were not at the middle level. And that was one of the recommendations, was to expand the coaching, right, up into the middle level. And then we did that with Stacy. So your modification to your title has been there over the past couple of years in response to the tri-state report.
And Melanie wasn't here.
Melanie wasn't here at all.
So she's only getting here this year. And as a matter of fact, had to pick up the recommendations from tri-state very quickly, become a part of our membership in our group. And we meet monthly to talk just about math on a Friday afternoon. And, you know, I have to say, it's a highlight, right? But it's a highlight to have this team come together, because we do everything from looking at student work to talking about professional development, how it's translated into classroom practice, to looking at systems improvements. So I thank you all for being a part of that. Now I'm going to turn it over to you to say what you thought afterwards, what you heard from teachers, or what sticks out to you in terms of...
I could start, because I had the opportunity to, in all four grades, fifth through eighth, talk to the teachers immediately afterwards. So on Thursday, they came on Monday, and I could talk to teachers on Thursday and Friday that week, showing them part of the presentation we gave to the visiting team, which was helpful for me, because it kind of refocused the team. You know, just, these are our goals, this is what we've done, these are our goals. And then we had these notes, which I think you, they had, too, right?
Actually?
Martha Curran took the notes, the minutes sort of of the, of the tri-state feedback. So it's not the official feedback, but to be able to give the teachers this feedback immediately was great, because the questions they have, I think the teachers felt like were legitimate. The praise that was given felt good. You know, there was talk about the, I could speak directly to them about retakes. You could see that people were impressed that that happened, especially at the high school level. So that's not middle school, but I think it's been a little bit of a hard time at Paulson, you know, getting that going. So it was just sort of like, okay, it's worth continuing. Enrichment has been something that's new at Brown the last two years. So just, again, that's, if, all, anything new is a little bit of work, and so it feels good when that work is worthwhile. And having someone else say it is nice.
I can speak to the, to the high school in terms, she mentioned the retakes, and the committee had mentioned the retakes. And I think we are hoping, you know, we had talked before tri-state came, and one of the things that many of the teachers said is they're like, pick their brains, what are they doing? Because we want to do what they're doing. And it was kind of reaffirming that some of the, the majority of the people that were there said, what are you guys doing? Because we want to know what you're doing. And so it was, you know, as much as we didn't get the big aha answer that we were all looking for, it was, it was kind of just nice to know that, that we felt like we were kind of in it together with them, and they were looking to us to say, how are you doing this again in the high school? I think that was one of the comments that, that someone said, they go, the fact that you're doing this in the high school, kudos to you. And we admittedly said, it's, you know, it's been rocky, it's been shaky, but we're doing it, and we're going to work through it. And so, no, we didn't get like that aha golden ticket, but it just led us to know that we were doing good work in the right path, so...
Can I add? So I remember when, sorry, Stacy, when Gail, when the members first came two years ago, and we had a team of 13, 14, 15 tri-state members here, and we asked Gail this time around, so, yeah, who do we have to prepare for? How many members are going to be here? And she's like, I don't know, it's usually four or five. And all of a sudden, there's 13 that are back. So I think that that's a testament to the number of districts that wanted to come back to see where we were, and were interested in learning more about us, too. And that was validating. And in terms of the things that they shared, it was nice when we were at the small table, and teachers were able to share some of their professional development that they've received, and the coaching they've received, and to get the feedback that they're seeing, that there's instantaneous, like, carryover into the classroom, and the teachers are using what they're getting from the PD and from the coaching. And then they see the excitement in the students. And the students are interested in learning, like, a different way. That it's not just about the math content, it's about, as you were speaking to before, it's that rigor and that, those 21st century skills that we're developing in the classroom now. One of the...
Stacy, just a second. You were at the elementary level when we instituted the change at kindergarten level. That cohort's in fifth grade right now?
They are in sixth grade.
Sixth grade right now. Sixth grade right now, okay. So was it your superintendent at that point that tried to advance the program, Math and Focus, right?
I did have a hard time right before it started, because somebody came over and said, one of the people from tri-state came over and said, we're trying, our superintendent wants a new program, and they made us go with Math and Focus, and it isn't working. And when he walked by, he said, by the way, remember you wanted us to go with Math and Focus?
I got beat up by the committee.
But he went with us, because the committee said we wanted bridges. And I think that was one of the things that came out two years ago, but it came out again this year, was that the elementary level going with bridges has drastically changed our math program. And it's, you know, it's now up through sixth and into seventh grade, and in a couple more years, those kids are going to hit the high school, and they don't do math the same way that the kids that are in the high school right now do. They use multiple strategies, they want to know why things work, and they're used to that from kindergarten on up. I was in a kindergarten classroom today where kindergarteners were explaining why this strategy worked, and why things were the way, and our kids can do that, that are five years old. I think moving, after the first tri-state visit two years ago, it was very clear we needed to move coaching up. Somehow I ended up moving to fifth and sixth grade. And it's been, we've done a lot of work, and we still have work to go. But when we were able to present last week about it, not only are we changing our, like, our content somewhat, but we're also changing our instructional practices. So we were able to show that it's not just the teacher in front of the classroom any longer delivering the instruction and kind of doing the traditional math, like, follow my steps and see how it works, but we're starting to do small group work and differentiated instruction. The kids are doing more problem solving. We brought Graham Fletcher in in December, who's an amazing professional developer, and who did work with our teachers third through seventh grade on how to, not only how to teach fractions in a different way, but then how to present instructionally through three-act math. And you could even see some of, you know, we had a high school teacher there who's using three-act math as well. But we're changing both steps, and we just need to keep moving that along.
Could I ask, if this is totally un-rehearsed, I'm a lib now. Student performance, what do you see differences? I know Melanie, as far as the types of students, we have two right here, who obviously had a different type of instruction in their, in their early career here in the system, so maybe less applicable. But in general, performance in the elementary to middle level, what evidence, you get tons of data, you know, internally, so what evidence you see in student performance that excites you, that makes you wonder, that, what do you see in differently?
I can say that at the elementary level, I've, just in PLCs, meeting with teachers, I've noticed recently that when we're talking about some of our performance assessments, and we're talking about how the students did, there are some assessments that are happening that, that we can compare how they did a couple of years on it to what they're doing now. And they're, they're just so much more successful now, where the teachers were like, oh my gosh, maybe we need to increase the rigor on this even more so now, because, like, they're getting it. And where a couple of years ago, when we had tried it for the first time, it was a struggle for them. So that's a little evidence.
One of the examples I always use with, like, teachers is, when I started in this position 11 years ago, and really up until bridges, the third-grade teachers would always complain that the kids, that the second-grade teachers must not be teaching subtraction. And I knew they did. Like, they did, and they did, and they did. But they drilled it, and they drilled it, and they drilled it. And the kids moved to third grade, and over the summer and the beginning of the year, it was lost. And so third grade would pick up as if it had never been taught before. And now, when they go from second grade to third grade, every single kid can subtract. And now we talk about, is the way that they subtract efficient enough? But we're not talking about can they subtract or not subtract. Now we're talking about the efficiency of their strategies. So it's, it's a huge difference, and I think as we've moved to more strategy-based instruction, the kids do retain things from year to year.
Carol, you can go.
Well, there's some specific topics that you see a different approach that kids will take. I'll give you one, because we just did it, so it's fresh in my mind, and then things go. Percent. So kids, and that can be somewhat abstract for kids, also because then we also talk about somewhat grown-up topics with percents of, you know, your interest rate. They don't, they see putting a deposit in the bank as a negative. So there's some issues. But that, that's a topic that we see kids using ratio tables, which they start as, it's third grade, with multiplication. And they use it so fluidly, it's, it's much more of what we used to do at the end of all this, that we would, you know, kind of a mental math and all. So there's a, that, it ends up being a shift for us of our approach, because they're coming in with a different experience and uncomfortable with different approaches that we haven't used in the past.
Couple other things, and board members, if interested in any more questions. Math, historically, I think at the secondary level especially, gets a lot of pressure from parents in the traditional sense, because it's seen, I think, as a gateway or a pathway to higher ed and to acceptances and so forth. We made some changes as far as the linear acceleration versus enrichment. And my review of the research shows it's pretty mixed on linear acceleration. There's no case closed there. So we went with the deeper approach, as opposed to advancing levels in the course of a year or two years at the formative years, let's say, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, we've done an enrichment approach. We've got some pretty good mileage, I know, just so far. So Carol, any, any feedback on the enrichment piece? I hate to, I hate to resort to, well, we have those complaints, but...
Right. And but we have. So, because people, and you came in my room, and someone was asking me, a student that did do the Jamba Grade. And so I was able, I was talking to him, because I feel like he will then talk to others.
Yeah.
And where you, Tom and I talked about how, just what you said.
Yeah.
I don't think either is the perfect way, but I feel much more comfortable with this, because we do it unit by unit, and we're not making a decision. So the student I was talking to, we made a decision about what he should do in fourth grade.
You're not.
At the end of fourth grade, I would give these little guys this long test. And then if we accelerated and it wasn't a good move, that wasn't great. And, you know, they were stuck there. If there was someone that we didn't accelerate, that maybe could have, so it wasn't perfect.
Very consequential move at that age.
Yeah.
And the responsiveness of this model is what I know that I felt most comfortable with, is that it is a unit-by-unit approach. Ryan, I don't know if, you know, or Jackie, if you guys have been accelerated in math, and your experiences have been very positive. One of the things that we had talked about is that we're missing a vote on some kids who didn't get an opportunity, because at nine years old in fourth grade, maybe they didn't perform as well as both of you did on that. And then some kids have emerged in fifth and sixth and seventh grade as candidates, you know, for more enrichment.
And even the, when I'm with this group now, I think, woo, they sure are good in math, but not everybody's mature.
Yeah.
You know, I just sort of wonder about that a little bit.
Yeah.
And you all just worked on a unit recently, getting ready for this in the fourth grade, as that group comes up to Brown. And we were, it's so, so interesting writing the curriculum for these units, because we try not to step into the grade ahead, and really, it's just, it's so interesting, and it's fun, you know, it's really fun. And I think the kids have fun. You, those kids, speaking. The first one, Corinne, Corinne?
No, go ahead.
She, she said her favorite unit was writing a 10-page research paper. You know, it wouldn't be what every sixth grader wants to do, but you could see she was passionate about it. And so that's just so great to have that. And when you, when you're in the classroom, and they come back, how they slide right in and pick up, and I feel comfortable about that, too, that there's no little gaps, because that is also an issue when we just jump them up ahead.
So my last comment to the board is, from a student performing perspective, Gail and I started to flesh out in the main core areas particularly. We have universal rates, so we have data around performance and basic math skills. Then also, we have the evidence, what you talked about with our performance assessment. So every unit of math instruction has a performance assessment, which we believe was separates us from the district, because it incorporates those 21st century capacities. And that's really, really important. We have data on that.
One of the things that came out two years ago, but it came out again this year, was that the elementary level going with Bridges has drastically changed our math program. And it's, you know, it's now up through sixth and into seventh grade. And in a couple more years, those kids are gonna hit the high school and they don't do math the same way that the kids that are in the high school right now do. They use multiple strategies. They wanna know why things work and they're used to that from kindergarten on up. I was in a kindergarten classroom today where kindergarteners were explaining why this strategy worked and why things were the way, and our kids can do that that are five years old. Um, I think moving after the first tri-state visit two years ago, it was very clear we needed to move coaching up. Um, somehow I ended up moving to fifth and sixth grade. And it's been, we've done a lot of work and we still have work to go. But when we were able to present last week about it, not only are we changing our, like our content somewhat, but we're also changing our instructional practices. So we were able to show that it's not just the teacher in front of the classroom any longer delivering the instruction and kinda doing the traditional math, like follow my steps and see how it works. But we're starting to do small group work and differentiated instruction. The kids are doing more problem solving. We brought Graham Fletcher in in December, who's an amazing professional developer and who did work with our teachers third through seventh grade on how to, not only how to teach fractions in a different way, but then how to present instructionally through three-act math. Um, and you could even see some of, you know, we had a high school teacher there who's using three-act math as well. But we're changing both steps and we just need to keep moving that along.
Could I ask, um, if this is totally un-rehearsed, I'm a lib now. Student performance, what do you see differences? I know Melanie, um, as far as the types of students, we have two right here, who obviously had a different type of instruction, um, in their, in their early career here in the system, so maybe less applicable. But in general, performance in the elementary to middle level, um, what evidence, we get tons of data, you know, internally, so what evidence you seeing is student performance that excites you, that makes you wonder, that, what do you see differently?
I can say that at the elementary level, I've, just in PLCs, meeting with teachers, I've noticed recently that when we're talking about some of our performance assessments and we're talking about how the students did, there are some assessments that are happening that the, we can compare how they did a couple of years on it to what they're doing now. And they're, they're just so much more successful now, where the teachers were like, oh my gosh, maybe we need to increase the rigor on this even more so now because like they're getting it. And where a couple of years ago, when we had tried it for the first time, it was a struggle for them. Um, so that's a little evidence.
I, uh, one of the examples I always use with like teachers is when I started in this position 11 years ago and really up until Bridges, the third grade teachers would always complain that the kids, that the second grade teachers must not be teaching subtraction. And I knew they did, like they did and they did and they did. But they drilled it and they drilled it and they drilled it. And the kids moved to third grade and over the summer and the beginning of the year, it was lost. And so third grade would pick up as if it had never been taught before. And now when they go from second grade to third grade, every single kid can subtract. And now we talk about, is the way that they subtract efficient enough? But we're not talking about can they subtract or not subtract. Now we're talking about the efficiency of their strategies. So it's, it's a huge difference and I think as we've moved to more strategy-based instruction, the kids do retain things from year to year.
Carol, anything else?
Well, there's some specific topics that you see a different, um, approach that kids will take. I'll, I'll give you one because we just did it, so it's fresh in my mind and then things go. Um, percents. So kids, and that can be somewhat abstract for kids, um, also because then we also talk about somewhat grown-up topics with percents of, um, you know, your interest rate. They don't, they see putting a deposit in the bank as a negative. So there's some issues. Um, but that, that's a topic that we see kids using ratio tables, which they start as, um, it's third grade with multiplication. And they use it so fluidly, it's, it's much more of what we used to do at the end of all this, that we would, you know, kind of a mental math and all. Um, so there's a, that it ends up being a shift for us of our approach because they're coming in with a different experience and, um, uncomfortable with different approaches that we haven't used in the past.
Couple other things and board members interested in more questions. Math historically, I think at the secondary level especially, gets a lot of pressure from parents, um, in the traditional sense because it's seen, I think, as a gateway or a pathway, um, to higher ed and to acceptances and so forth. We made some changes, um, as far as the linear acceleration versus enrichment. Um, and my review of the research shows it's pretty mixed on linear acceleration. There's no case closed there, so we went with the deeper, uh, approach as opposed to advancing levels in the course of a year or two years at the formative years, let's say, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, we've done an enrichment approach. Um, we've got, um, some pretty good mileage, I know, just so far. So Carol, any, any feedback on the enrichment piece? I hate to, I hate to resort to, well, we have those complaints.
Right, and but we have. So, cause people, um, and you came in my room and someone was asking me, a student that did do the Jumba grade. And so I was able, I was talking to him because I feel like he will then talk to others. Um, and where you, Tom and I talked about how, just what you said.
Yeah.
I don't think either is the perfect way, um, but I feel much more comfortable with this because we do it unit by unit and we're not making a decision. So the student I was talking to, we made a decision about what he should do in fourth grade. At the end of fourth grade, I would give these little guys this long test. And, um, and then if we accelerated and wasn't a good move, that wasn't great. And, um, you know, they were stuck there. If there was someone that we didn't accelerate that maybe could have, so it wasn't perfect.
Very consequential move at that age.
Yeah.
And the responsiveness of this model is what I know that I felt most comfortable with is that it is a unit by unit approach. Um, Ryan, I don't know if, um, you know, or Jackie, if you guys have been accelerated in math, um, and your experiences may have been very positive. Um, one of the things that we had talked about is that we're missing a vote on some kids, um, who didn't get an opportunity because at nine years old in fourth grade, maybe they didn't perform as well as both of you did, um, on that. And then some kids have emerged in fifth and sixth and seventh grade as, um, candidates, you know, for more enrichment.
And even the, the, when I'm with this group now, I think, ooh, they sure are good in math, but not everybody's mature. You know, I just sort of wonder about that a little bit. Um, and you all just worked on a unit, um, recently, getting ready for this in the fourth grade as that group comes up to ground. And we were, it's so, so interesting writing the curriculum for these units because we try not to step into the grade ahead and, um, really, it's just, it's so interesting and, um, it's fun, you know, it's really fun. And I think the kids have fun. Um, you, those kids speaking, the first one, um, Corinne, Corinne?
No, I don't know.
She, she said her favorite unit was writing a 10-page research paper. You know, it wouldn't be what every sixth grader wants to do, but you could see she was passionate about it. And so that's just so great to, um, have that. And when you, when you're in the classroom and they come back, how they slide right in and pick up and, um, I feel comfortable about that too, that there's no little gaps because that is also an issue when we just jump them up ahead.
So my last comment to the board is from a student performing perspective, Gail and I started to flesh out, um, in, in the main core areas particularly, we have universal rates, so we have data around performance and basic math skills. Then also we have the evidence, what you talked about with our performance assessment. So every unit of math instruction has a performance assessment, which we believe what separates us the district because it incorporates those 21st century capacities. And that's really, really important. We have data on that. We focus on analyzing this year. That's been our primary focus.
It's in the notes.
Yep, yes it is. There's a lot of those notebooks. And then we had, um, the grade two and grade four, big interdisciplinary experiences and we're building grade six and grade eight next year. And those are multi-disciplined, some involve math, some don't.
Actually, two, two definitely does in, um, as well.
Grade two and grade six will. And then finally, the highest, final level will be at the high school level where we have our SAT, our AP, our ACT, um, and college admissions kind of reporting. So student performance from four very distinct different levels, but with a math thread through all of them, it gives a very good view to the board of math performance. Um, so, but I'm done monopolizing. Any questions from the board or Jackie and Ryan or anyone else?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanna thank you all. Um, you could probably tell I break out in cold sweat when math is, is mentioned, but, um, that's because I was taught in a different way, I think. Um, and I see through my kids, these different strategies and they're actually teaching me, um, a lot. And, and your enthusiasm, um, and the passion that you bring to the subject that you're teaching the kids is multiplied and trickles down. So thank you, um, for all that you're doing. I really do look forward to seeing all this and letting my kids explain it to me.
I have a question. Being exposed to the tri-state consortium, have you formulated any opinions about that consortium and, and, um, and, um, I mean, obviously you feel it was a worthwhile experience, so you must take some value from it. Um, but have you made any observations about, um, whether there's particular philosophies shared among those schools, uh, that are in the consortium or whether each one is kind of, um, independent, uh, but they come together in a consortium fashion? Like where are they on the scale of, you know, homogeneity versus, um, independence?
I would say not bogged down in the nuts and bolts. They have the freedom, I think economically probably, socioeconomic, to not be bogged down by some nuts and bolts that you would be when you're in a district, um, that has financial issues and the kids really, um, come, so many of our kids come wanting to learn. Um, it makes it easier frankly for these school districts to jump to a higher level of learning than making sure everyone gets just enough. No?
I certainly think looking at just the philosophy of tri-state in general, that there's definitely that same emphasis on 21st century skills that we have and performance-based assessments. And they gave us some really good feedback when they were here two years ago in terms of what we could do to keep advancing our performance-based assessments. And we've been starting to work on that, like creating a, a rubric that can be used consistently, K-12 on analyzing as opposed to when we wrote the math curriculum, you could kinda go through all of our math PBAs that have analyzing and the rubrics are all slightly different, tweaked to that PBA. But through their philosophy on, on how you go about a performance-based assessment, we were able to gain feedback on that.
And I know Gail has strongly urged us to go on a visit ourselves. So we are invited, we've been trained to go to other districts and participate and help with, you know, being their critical friends. So, um, we have to pick some topics. I don't know, have you gone on one yet?
No, yeah.
Unlike the ASLS, which you can just go on a visit, uh, you can't go on a tri-state visit unless you have a monthly day training. So, um, there's a very specific protocol, which you saw on the receiving end, how that works. Um, I think, um, you know, just to button it up on, on that question, Seth, I think we have similar demographics we serve. We have a lot of similar values we aspire in, in the consortium of districts, um, to accomplish with our kids. And I think it's a broader purpose of education. Uh, and I think it's definitely a, a very progressive, you know, mindset towards education, which is refreshing when you get with educators, I think it's kind of saying not just bogged down in minutia, but in, you know, really advancing our mission and what we're doing. That, that I know. From the superintendent level, we have quarterly meetings, uh, that's shared among the superintendent level as well.
I just wanna add one final thing on that because I came from a district that recently went through a NEAS visit before I came here. So this was my first experience in a tri-state visit. Um, it was completely different in a very good way. Um, in our NEAS visit, we got so bogged down in literally the nitty-gritty of, and they would look at one little thing and want support on that one little thing. And there wasn't like this big overarching picture of systemic change and where are you going and future focus? Like it was literally in pure line-by-line data and evidence and did things aligned and where is that in the rubric? And we got so bogged down in that component of it that we left thinking, now what? Like we didn't even know what we were supposed to do next. We didn't leave with any like good or bad. It was like, it was checking a box. Um, this did not feel like that at all. It was completely the opposite. There were no boxes to check. It was truly conversational, um, you know, hard questions, supporting evidence of student work, like that component of it. Um, it felt very, very different, being someone new and never going through this process before. Um, it was nice to see that they were really looking big, systemically, where have you been, where are you moving? Um, and I think that speaks to a lot of what you were saying earlier about they saw the alignment between our mission and truly the work that we're doing in our schools. And it was nice to be acknowledged on that level.
And it also seems to me, and I've been on the board for almost 10 years now and I've been through the NEAS years and, and I see a big difference in the way that, you know, our faculty respond to the tri-state, um, version. And to me, it's, or paradigm, I think it's, it's, um, I think it's more encouragement than grading.
Yes.
It was hard, you know what though? It was Stacy pointed to the performance assessments. Two years ago, it was hard to hear people you respect say, that's not really a performance assessment. But it was important as opposed to what Melanie was talking about, like you don't have enough, you know, X amount of this in your room. Um, it was about the work. And it was, I took issue with, well, that is a performance assessment. This, we say, no, it's not because, and it was hard to, to accept that, but it was important.
I just did one, um, I'll play devil's advocate here, having served on the ESS team, albeit at the college level. When we finish reports and I've done visiting, uh, visiting teams, um, meetings at the end, I will often ask the school, I said, was there a question we didn't ask you that you thought you should have been asked and played the devil's advocate piece? So I'd ask you the same question. Did you, did they not ask a question you think they should have asked?
I personally think that question, I think talking to people on the side, but they suit, they did that in the first visit. So this visit, it's a different, so that first visit, there was an opportunity for people to do that, which I, I was thinking this time, oh, it was always in the group. So really if there was a squeaky wheel, they would have had a hard time to squeak. But they had the time two years ago.
The three-day visit, they got in their squeaks. Yeah, definitely.
And I, I too have been in schools doing the ESS studies and I think sometimes it's used, I, I, so this is a compliment to the board. When you kind of need something as a school and the school board's not hearing it and like, we're squeezed into this building and we need more. As, um, so backing, uh, a need for money usually.
Yeah.
And so that you can, that you decided, okay, that's not a need, you know, that you, I think that's important to.
The accreditation process does carry a little bit of a dark cloud sometimes in some districts, you know, for that, that we want to accelerate change in a certain area. And the accreditation process sometimes can, can serve a little.
Get it moved, yeah.
Yeah. This is truly a critical friends approach, you know, with some very clear standards. Their indicators are black and white, you can wrap your mind around it and they're agreed upon as, as Gail and I both said, industry standards for districts of excellence.
The one piece I'll say in terms of like what I think they didn't ask this time was last time they asked us a lot about like moving the instructional coaching further up. And we came back and said to them, yep, we've moved it up to sixth grade. But they didn't ask, are you moving it further this time? And so that was, I was kinda expecting that.
I think also next steps for the high school was something that wasn't as focused on. Um, the teacher that was in the room, uh, we, we were prepared. We were ready. Because we do know that, you know, you, you heard the progression of where Bridges has brought these students. So what does that mean, um, for a high school teacher? What does that mean for a teacher that's been teaching algebra for 20 years when they're going to be getting a different set of kids in three years? So Justin Kizer was the teacher that was here, who he's fairly new also, only in his second year. Um, and the reason why I wanted him here, because I, I, I think it's important not only for him, you know, he shared some of the work he's been doing, but, but he's gonna be here for a while. And so he's gonna be the one that's gonna see these students and be able to have to shift and adjust. And so I was expecting a little bit more, um, I guess questioning around that, like, how are you preparing your high school teachers for this? And we didn't really get questions around that, but I really do think that's, um, important next steps in our work. So that's where like this team, when we come back together, um, because these kids are gonna be sitting in our classroom in a couple of years and we have to know what they're coming in with. So that wasn't really talked about.
There was an upper level, um, math teacher who made a comment recently, um, with me about, um, what some of the students just can't do anymore at the junior and senior level. And I said, that's interesting because you haven't seen the unicorns yet, they're in sixth grade. So they haven't arrived. So it makes you wonder, but.
But that's only a few years. And so the work that needs to be done in that interim, um, yeah, yeah.
Thank you again for.
Thank you.
All the work.
Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Okay. So last, last matter, um, I'm gonna hand out, um, we'll circle back to the curriculum committee. We have a report on some subgroup performance for, uh, one of our groups from the state level. Yeah. Um, but we'll schedule it at a curriculum committee meeting for a more in-depth, in-depth update. Not a good student. Yeah. This is just a slideshow with some information and we will go in-depth at the curriculum committee meeting to circle back on that report.
So the board can look at this and, and then bring any questions they have to the curriculum?
Board to me.
Board.
Board to get.
Board to me.
Can I see our guests has arrived?
Yes, so we're gonna move it along. Um, board member comments? Um, curriculum and student development committee?
I have a 14-page report.
Of course you do.
Right. Um, we had a very productive, um, meeting today. Uh, we missed last meeting because of a snow day. Um, Liz Pataia gave a fabulous update on the ESS program, um, both the, both at the Paulson and at the high school level. The bottom line is it's producing better outcomes for students, it's saving some money and it's, we're, it's increasing staff productivity. That's a very high-level look.
And we're at capacity.
And we're at capacity at the, the middle school.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
For Paulson? What's capacity, six?
Nine.
Eight, nine, oh.
It's a nine-to-one ratio of clinicians to students.
And, um, then we, um, uh, reviewed the, uh, student trips, um, to, we have information here, um, to Spain, Europe, Canada, led by the irrepressible Mary Merkel-Skellman, the big republic. And, um, they are all dedicated, extremely student-centric and focused on safety.
Can I ask a question about that? Are there, and I ask this every time, are there scholarship opportunities for, are any of these have opportunities for kids who might struggle?
We discussed that but didn't, um, come to any sort of conclusion on that.
So these trips, um, for board members who are fairly new, international field trips dried up, um, right after 9/11. And it took a while for them to start to come back. Uh, we introduced them about five years ago and we've had some great success with them over the past five years or so. Um, and of course there's a lot of precautions and the code of conduct applies and, um, they're under our watch and our care and the ratio of staff to students is very clearly, the actuary is clear. Uh, Gail and I support them, uh, for the connections they do to our program, they have with our program obviously, um, and they're incredible experiences for kids. Ryan and Jackie, did everyone go on international? Neither one?
My son did and I want to say, it was the best experience. He's in his twenties now and he just.
Where did he go?
He went to Spain with Pepper.
So did my daughter went to, yeah, to Spain.
It was incredible.
Yeah. Yeah, loved it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, um, Paul Mezick presented the chemical hygiene plan, um.
As you've seen.
Which, yeah.
He, he?
Yeah.
He made it pretty.
He did.
He did, he was super.
Cash in. He had socks.
Yes, he did, yeah.
Radiation socks.
Yeah.
Serious.
And, uh, very thorough and very detailed, right? We'll need to add the Jedi for the board next time to adopt the plan, I think.
The plan, not the chemical hygiene plan.
And, um, lastly, Chris, Mr. Pags, I can't pronounce his last name.
Thank you guys.
Presented, uh, gave a, told us about the, um, human-based resources approach to team, which is the measuring and, um, a kind of a program for teachers. And it's a fantastic program. Details, working.
Just one quick addendum to the curriculum committee that, um, did make it the committee level, but is, uh, the timeliness of the communication, I did not plan it this way. I think many of you probably saw a very horrific, uh, display of behavior, um, that went on at a local supermarket. Um, and it came within a day after we finally culminated with all the work that we've been doing around the topic of racist intolerance and civil discourse. There was a lot to read and that was intentional. Uh, we really wanna make sure that folks were very, um, aware of, um, how serious we take those issues and how much pride we take in, in really educating, um, our kids the best we can. We're never done and I'll always say we're not perfect. Uh, but I do think that always pursuing that, uh, that level of perfection is, is where we are. And, um, it was very timely considering what happened.
Sadly. Thank you. End of report. Communications, home report. We have not met since our last meeting. Facilities committee?
Uh, we bumped our meeting because we had the previous meeting, it was at the end of February, so we didn't have cause to meet again.
Finance committee?
Yes, um, Katie, I'm gonna talk about tri-board, uh, in combination with, with finance. Um, the tri-board working group, uh, will have by a week from tomorrow, a set of defined options that we will present to all three boards, uh, concerning, uh, our best thoughts with respect to, uh, how the school facility should look going forward in Madison, as well as a set of criteria that we used, um, to, uh, not exclude, but to, uh, assess other options which we deem to be less appropriate. Now, as part of that effort, Colliers has been a critical element, uh, in helping us assess site feasibility and other aspects of potential reconfiguration of the existing school facilities. And, uh, we have at this point, uh, pretty much exhausted funds available to support continuing to work with them. Uh, we asked Chuck if he thought working for free over the next 15 months was feasible and he objected to that. And so, um, we are going to, um, ask board to discuss and take action to approve, uh, funding for Colliers continued, uh, work with, uh, the tri-board working group, uh, through the April 1st to July 1st period. Uh, and then to, uh, also ask for funding for their continued effort from the July 1st through the end of the next fiscal year. Because, um, once we have options that have been presented and one or more options has been deemed appropriate to bring to the public in the form of a referendum, obviously we're gonna need Colliers to continue in place. So, uh, we're gonna be meeting with, assuming the board elects to go forward with these asks, that we're gonna be meeting, uh, with the board of finance tomorrow night, uh, the board of selectmen next week, and then finally the CIP. Other issues that we touched on at the, at the finance committee, uh, meeting, uh, tonight, dealt with the need to list every single check that gets paid to a vendor, uh, and also to discuss an efficient way of looking at the implications or the impact of line-item transfers. Uh, and the committee elected to dump that into Greg's lap, uh, for the, the policy committee to address. And the final issue that we discussed was a possibility of providing a top-down form of guidance for Tom and the adminis, and the administration to better facilitate the budget process going forward. End of report.
Any questions?
Actually, end of reports.
Thank you. Um, personnel committee?
Personnel committee has not met since our last meeting.
Uh, personnel committee has not, uh, met since our last meeting. Uh, we did receive word, um, that the, uh, ongoing discussions with the Teamsters seems to be evolving towards arbitration. Uh, I have nothing further to report on that, but, end of report.
Thank you. Uh, policy committee?
This, uh, we, I have a few items to discuss. Um, I'll start with Liz. This is the cutting-edge information you've been waiting for all these weeks. I can tell you the dates of the elementary conference dates for 2019, 2020, right now. So put them on your calendar.
Calendar is ready.
So we, we, just for some backstory on this, there is some, you know, debate about where we could put them this year, do the placement of holidays on the calendar for 1920. So we, we talked that out and we, we came to consensus about it. This will be included in future calendar drafts, so going forward, we all agree that since this is an early dismissal matter, it should really be part of all the other early dismissals that you see on the calendar when we look at it as a board, so we will approach it that way going forward. But drumroll, October 23 and 24 of 2019, of 2019, and February 5 and 6 of 2020 will be the elementary conference dates. So, parade. Um, you will see two policies move forward at the next meeting, um, a policy on classroom observations and a policy on policy review. Um, and we've been talking about the latter for a while and the combination of three different policies that have some disagreements in, in language and, um, clarifying that as well as adding some pieces that we thought were good guardrails as a committee in terms of when you move things forward and when you go down things and, uh, some periods in between that. So try to see those at the next board meeting, we moved those forward unanimously tonight. Um, we discussed home visits by social workers. Um, we will review that at the next policy meeting, so it'll be a little while before you see that. We also discussed, um, the, uh, hot topic of out-of-district tuition-paying students. We are going to discuss that more at an upcoming policy meeting or policy meetings before you see anything potentially about that. So if you are interested in the topic, which is an interesting topic to get into about, um, people paying tuition for students to come here, I would suggest you come to our policy meetings coming, going forward. Um, and the last thing that we discussed was the anonymous, anonymous reporting app user agreement. Um, what that more or less boils down to, we had some conversation about the reporting app and how we might tackle that. We originally said as a board, uh, or we came to some agreement that we were going to send it to the policy committee and see if we thought we needed a policy after some consultation, and Tom, you might add a little bit to this. Um, the committee agreed that the user agreement is more appropriate in this case than a policy, so that as far as the policy committee itself is concerned, we are done with it, although you will hear more about the topic from Tom and the administration.
Yeah, Attorney Richmond Smith, um, from Shipman has, uh, been guiding us along the way, guiding me along the way, particularly since, uh, probably in the middle of the winter, December, we started indicating this. Um, the kind of the nascent, uh, feature of the technology, how it's just a newer technology, probably wouldn't lend itself to a policy and overall her guidances, really policies, unless they're legally mandated, uh, probably have the best interest just to write them, the sake of writing, that this is a more nimble approach, uh, for, for the district. We have user agreements on anything from copiers, uh, you know, other features around the district and it would fall into the ranks of that.
End of report.
Any questions?
Did you want to talk about that at the meeting's table?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we are going to, we are, that's a good point. We are going to have a discussion as well at the future, at the next policy meeting about a school violence policy that Seth brought forward. We did not talk about it at all, we ran out of time, but we will raise that again. So that's a double feature, if you're interested in, uh, the school violence policy as well as the out-of-district tuition-paying students, uh, you know, come for one stay.
Feature double feature.
Great. Um, where am I, is on?
If you're asking me, I have an intention.
Okay. No report? Um, audience response?
I just have one comment. I want to thank you for last week's email about the racism and civil discourse email, although it was very long, it was a very good read to actually see in one place the, what the entire district focuses on. And there was a lot of positive comments, it spurred a lot of discussion. Of course, I don't see from the upper grades, like what happens in the upper grades, but from an elementary perspective, it's nice to know that that is, it's a comment. There is a threat that goes through the entire. However, I do ask and question, and I don't know if it's you or would it be like the principal or the teachers, is there a place where an elementary parent can go to, to have that discussion? Those are hard discussions to have with kindergartners.
Sure, sure.
But if it's happening on the playground, the unguarded moments and, you know, people say things they don't mean and they don't know what it means, how do you have those discussions? Is that sort of something that's being talked about amongst the teachers? Because I know from a parent perspective, I'm like, what?
Yeah, yeah. So it really, um, I would agree protocol, I think it's a great question, if that's okay with the board. Um, it really is something that in the principal's office that, that should start there.
It should start on the, like, a teacher-principal level and.
Kind of, yeah, to kind of coach people. As I always say, you know, I said in the email, we're at our best.
Right.
We do what we're trained to do, and that's teach. Once we start to get out of that sphere, then we definitely need the supports and, and the administrator can tap into multiple resources to help with that, whether if it's, you know, some of the support services we have now or even an outside expert, um, yeah, so that's, it's a great question.
Is there any, I mean, if there was, would you consider, maybe this is something you go for with a, when you ask principal about, of having your PTOs and stuff, help bring things in that help have that conversation?
Yeah.
Or help parents understand kind of what is happening in the schools or, or things that are being said that shouldn't be said, because kids really don't know what it means at that level and how to have those conversations.
Sadly, it's, it's, uh, it seems to be a blossoming industry, um, with, with external resources right now, um, because we've had a number of things forwarded us on that topic. So on the other end of the spectrum, Liz, at the high school, um, discussing controversial issues at the high school, we say, you know, Jackie and Ryan, wasn't as hot of a topic as it is now. So there's a certain set of skills, um, and, and institutions that I hold in higher regard, like Teachers College Columbia, actually have, um, uh, training programs and, and repertoires for teachers to, to call on, um, in those types of venues. I felt at the individual level, and I look at individual at the elementary level, I would prefer to case-by-cases when something happens, but certainly, um, helping all adults in how do you respond when it happens is valuable, is definitely valuable, that I appreciate.
Right, I, I just don't think on the elementary level you actually get from most kids that it is happening.
Sure.
That it actually is happening.
Sure.
Like it's very rare that someone will say something.
Yeah.
Especially in unguarded moments, like in the, on the playground or in the lunchroom.
Yeah.
I think that's why responsive classroom is so helpful in teaching kids, having those tools in their toolbox to when you're feeling scared, when you're, how do, how do I respond? And I think developmentally appropriately at that level, giving them those tools to address scary situations or, um, have the language to address those, those, I think that's key for that age group in particular.
And that's a great point and it certainly isn't the, the all end-all, but that is why I included in that message the different instructional approaches that we use.
Yes.
Because they're not big sexy topics that, you know, that we're teaching kids how to have civil discourse around a character in a kindergarten book, but it does lay down the foundational pillars to when they get to be 10, 15, 18, and an adult, like, um, to learn how to do that, so.
It did prompt a lot of conversation, I, I do have to say, so I want to thank you for the email because it, it obviously was incredibly thoughtful in the way you approached it.
Thank you.
And it must have taken you a very long time to craft.
Well, I, you know what though? It did, but it was a, a small army, uh, led by Gail and her team. Um, but I, I will say, you know, we're at our worst when we whitewash and we have had episodes in our district that we have handled and I'm very grateful to, um, a mom and dad who started the conversation and a couple of other folks since then that have said, hey, I really think we should talk about this. Yeah, we should. We should. I just wanted to reassure parents that we don't whitewash, these are the things that we do and we'll continue to work on. And there was even one section where we talked about, um, additions to the curriculum, especially at the middle level next year, that go deeper into these topics. Um, again, it's, you know, talking about curriculum doesn't excite people, except me and Gail, um, but it is what we do, it's what we're trained to do and we try to stay in that sphere, but I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, can I just ask real quick? Was part of your question trying to get at, like, how do I talk to my child? Or is it more like how do the parents deal?
I think there's no way for, for me to, I've really asked Tom how to talk to my child. I mean, I would probably talk to my teacher first, um, but I'm just trying to pick up on, because I do know these incidences have it, have happened. I do know when my child comes home and might say something three days after it happened and it's kind of like, how do you have that conversation, A, oh, three days after it happened? But how do you actually have that conversation with a kindergartner or a first grader? It's a large topic and it's, if that's something that, that needs to be looked at in the elementary schools, like it would, it really wouldn't be coming from a parent like me who would be like stumbling over their words, it would come from the educators, that how to best approach that so that every parent understood the school district stance on stuff and maybe the appropriate way. Because we do look to the schools to figure out how to appropriately address these really emotional and.
Complex.
Complex.
And it's.
And how to do it. My first resource is to ask Becky or, or my daughter's teacher in elementary school, knowing these are happening. They're my first resource because they're the only resource I have to say, what's appropriate? How much do I share? Do I scare them straight? Like, do, do I beg them to tell me? Um, and they're, our teachers are our first resource for that sort of conversation, to know what's appropriate for your children.
Yeah, I would just say, this is not, this is a person-to-person, um, just advice, not a board member, um, talking at the moment, but there is a resource available in the community, um, there's an organization called the Anti-Defamation League and they have a substantial amount of free topical stuff like that, that they help, how to approach topics with your own children, all of that sort of stuff. So if you have a personal question on how to deal with that, then that would be a good place.
Right, but it's also a sensitive conversation to have amongst other parents.
Yeah.
I'm not only just myself, I'm saying that you now prompted a lot of discussion and a lot of people going, how do you approach that with your children at such a young age?
I know that they put on community programs as well, so that you may want to reach out to them as another resource.
Appreciate your feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Katie just whispered, the best resource ever on that is Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers. My favorite website ever to talk about our subjects.
Jackie?
Well, I was just going to say, it is kind of funny how the younger kids are getting more and more exposed to all this stuff, so I like babysit a lot.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and this little, this little, uh, girl I babysit, she's three, her older sister's six, and she asked me, she comes off the school bus and tells me about how her friend was talking about how Trump wants to build a wall. And he, she asked me, why are Mexicans bad? Why don't we want them in our country? And I obviously just deflected the question and tried not to answer it, but like, they, they have their, like, three-year-olds are walking around with iPads, like, they have access to all of these things and they see things they don't know, they don't understand. And so, yeah.
It's important, it's very important.
That's great input, this generation, every generation has a cross to bear. I'm sure, you know, the civil rights era, depression era, um, our kids have overexposure to information. The average age of pornography exposure now is 11. Uh, the amount of exposure to violence is unprecedented and it certainly has an impact in, you hear it?
Good conversation.
Onward.
Um, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Um, all in favor? I oppose. Oh, no, sorry, discussion. All in favor?
Hi, you're going to do it right.
I know, I know, it's making me nervous. Abstain. Motion carries. I need a, um, motion to approve the minutes from the March 5th, 2019 Board of Education meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Who's doing our minutes today?
It's on video, Laura will be doing it.
Good question. All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. Um, I need a motion to approve the Spain 2020 trip.
As cited.
Sighted.
And I don't think it needs a second because it's coming out in.
Yeah, it is.
Discussion?
There was one question we had just briefly, Tom, to clarify the, um, liability, insurance, the, where does liability land and how is that protected?
Is it part of the, the agreement with the, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You mean, is there a trip?
No, like if, you know.
Something happens.
Something happens. It does with these agencies that we book through, we don't, we don't.
We don't book a separate insurance policy, it's part of the agreement.
It is part of ES's thing, so it's, you know, it's not on the board or the district of superintendent or the teachers, it's on ES.
Yes.
It is in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
This one confirm?
Yeah.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. Motion to approve Europe 2020 trip?
So move.
Second.
Doesn't need a second. Um, all in favor?
I.
I.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. Um, motion to approve Canada 2020 trip?
A.
So move.
So many.
Discussion, or no, second? Does need a second? Discussion?
French Canada.
All in favor?
A.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion carries. Uh, motion to approve Dominican Republic 2020 trip?
So move.
Doesn't need a second. Um, discussion.